Please join me in public leaders.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First time approved minutes of prior meeting. Is there a motion to approve the monthly minutes of September the seventeenth?
So move second.
On discussion, and all okay, all opposed, yes have it. Is there a motion to approve the executive session? Which was discussion of union contract negotiations.
So move second.
Discussion here, all okay, all opposed, yes have it. Just the two signature pages, right?
Yes.
Correspondents?
Nothing.
None? Financials?
Do you have any correspondent?
Nope. Financials? On the operating budget, we are at. Income is trending at a hundred and fifteen percent for July through June twentieth. And then expenditures are at forty-three point three percent. That's a hundred and fifteen because we don't have all of the actual final budget numbers in it till after we vote at the October meeting. So that's why it looks a little off. But we are trending on those, on the tax revenues at fifty percent of the budget with thirty, not even thirty percent time to life. And then on receivables, we have sixty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents in outstanding receivables. Eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-nine cents in commitments. For total receivable orders of fifty thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars. Is there a motion to accept the financial report?
So move second.
Discussion here, all okay, all opposed, yes have it. Motion to approve the warrants and bills as prepared by the district account.
So move.
Second?
Second.
On the second hearing, all okay, all opposed, yes have it. Superintendent's report.
I think it's gone since we last spoke. Turbidity units being installed as we speak. It's gonna take a little while. They're going in, we have one in right now. We're gonna do another one tomorrow on our own. That's gonna keep coming back.
How many totals do we have to do?
Six.
Ah, the pack tank was cleaned. We did a bulk tank fitting in there, we cut it open and. We sucked out about three feet of residue on the bottom. And that is now buttoned up and in operation.
Is that normal for the cleaning to have as much residue or are we behind on it?
Way behind.
Way behind?
Never did not.
Okay, so how, how, yeah, how often should it be done?
I don't know, we'll find out, we're probably just either yearly or every other year, that's probably however long, how old that tank is. It wasn't original to the building, as they used to do uptotes.
Okay.
But I don't know, call it seven or eight years.
Yeah.
Even if we did it every other year, or every year.
So do, do you have a preventative maintenance manual like working on it? So obviously that would just go into the PM manual.
But again, we don't, we don't know how long it takes it out to build up. If we did it every year, we might, we might get one vacuum.
Right.
And just good to go.
That's gotta be something around here from when this facility was built. That has a maintenance plan when the, all the stuff was turned over by the engineer at the.
We have a book.
Yeah.
I'm working on.
Okay, alright.
That's working on kind of a, a set schedule for things.
Okay.
That's, that's definitely something we need to do. Um, that was cleaned. We had a couple leaks actually recently, one on Main Street and one in Verewell. Just fixed a couple service leaks we fixed last week.
So we had another leak on Main Street, another, another first.
On the Bristol Abbey side. The Center Street.
Center Street.
Excuse me, Center Street.
Yeah, we, yeah, heard about the one on Center Street.
Yeah, okay.
That was a good one, that was a, that was a good one, wasn't really a leak, right? It was kinda.
Yeah.
It was all, it was a five foot mismark, right?
Kinda like, yeah, we should've been over here.
Yeah.
Very much.
Always, always do that thing to, to like.
Tina and I were working on the rules and regs and the rate, for a few of the rates that we should have to be pretty soon. Yep.
This is what you guys are working on this?
Oh yeah.
Okay.
That's about it, there's more into the old, you know, some of the old business, which I can go over. Kim gave me, so we have a small list of problematic meters, we call it. That we tagged, told them to give us some data on these. They've been tagged, they're not working, I said, just give me a list and we'll see what you guys want.
These are all residential?
Yeah. See what you wanna do at this point, they've been notified.
And you're still not getting a response?
Yes.
What have we done in the past? I know we mail them letters, we call them.
We estimate high until they answer.
Until they come.
Is that working?
It, on some of them it's, it's far, some of these ones we haven't.
Do you, you take their average use before and.
And blow it up.
And, and, you know, add thirty percent to it or whatever.
And they still won't call.
The only other way to do it is put a door hanger on it and say you're gonna shut it off.
I would do a door hanger and shut them off. It's getting to the point where, and people, and as far as people, you're gonna be reading, not to change the subject, but it was not wrong meters. We're gonna be reading soon November. How many people still haven't paid from the last billing cycle?
We just sent out certifies, we sent out a hundred and fifty-nine. So they have until the twenty-eighth to pay, that's when they get shut off.
So a hundred and fifty-nine certified.
So we usually get a week after that and then we shut them off.
In October, so by October twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Is that normal? What, what's, you, normally on certifies, how many do we normally send out?
It's normally less, but normally we would tag before we certified and we didn't tag this time, we put it right on the bill, the additional fee.
Yeah.
And we just sent certifies everyone.
What's the total dollar, not, I mean, do we know the total?
To certify?
No, all, all those one fifty-nine, how much money is that, just out of curiosity?
It's right here.
What is?
It's on the, uh.
Sixty-four, sixty-four, about three fifty-eight?
Sixty-five grand?
Forty.
What's number?
Oh, standing against is a forty-six, forty-six.
Oh, up top, yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, so that one hundred, okay, that forty-six relates to the one hundred and fifty-nine ounces, okay.
So that's on new, is, is we're not gonna tag anymore, we're just gonna send the certifies.
Right, and then we'll, we'll tag before we shut them off, though, we usually tag like a week before.
Yeah, and in a certified, you have to sign for the, you, you, you have to sign that you got the letter and all that fun stuff.
Yeah, if you do that, that way and that, and then give them the tags saying, by, if you give it on Monday, by Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we need to cut the labor down.
Yeah.
By doing that, so we can get all this stuff.
Well, that's right, yeah, that's why we do, we do tag.
Yeah, that's why we didn't tag.
Yep, 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 that's, that's good, yep.
Thank you, sir.
Nothing.
Full business. I'm assuming we haven't done, nothing's moved on this.
Uh, we've, I've been talking with environmental partners. I can't, I can't remember how lo- how long ago it was, but there was some talk about. Testing, getting, getting some data with environmental partners, coordinating. To see if we can get a yield out back on that land, and then Tina found. The right of entry, that they said we could do it. So we're working on, they're working on, environmental partners is working on some numbers for that.
Okay.
I'm gonna see him Thursday, so I'll see how far, I'm gonna see him tomorrow, so see how far he's gone on that. Hopefully, we can get some numbers on that, might have to, I don't know. Between that, we have wells over here on Walker Street. Possibly Brook Street, might could look into it. There is some well exploration to be done. We'll have to put a dollar for that. Five twenty-seven Somerset Ave, garage renovation, it's now a renovation more than an addition. We have numbers to, I'm waiting on one more quote. But the quote came, one of our quotes was pretty favorable. It's around fifteen thousand for the, for roof windows. For the repair of this roof. Repairing this roof. A whole new roof there and windows. It's around fifteen thousand.
All new fascia board and all that, that's it?
Yeah, that too, yeah, that too.
So, so we don't, we're not discussing adding a garage?
I got, I have quotes for a Morton building down there.
Okay.
In size it ranges, the, the size that we were thinking, that was thirty by fifty, is approximately eight thousand dollars. I have a quote.
I think I was taking six figures on something like that.
So I wasn't horrified, yeah. What did we set aside to do?
Cause the design was twenty-five thousand.
So we already set twenty-five thousand.
There's no design. We already did it, I have pictures, they showed me.
So what was the size of it again?
Thirty by fifty, thirty, thirty by fifty.
Thirty wide, fifty long.
So we already set twenty-five thousand aside towards that project that's sitting in the, in a special article. And I can look into other metal companies as well, that was just the one I've gotten.
Eighty's not bad, honestly. So that's coal storage though, that's just to put the building off eighty grand?
Yes, no, he, yeah.
Concrete?
Concrete.
So concrete and just the coal building? Oh yeah, no, that's not more than.
No, 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 there's more to it.
Oh yeah.
We gotta run some electric too, we have a line right there, but they might have to upgrade it, who knows?
Oh, so that, that eighty doesn't include electric and all that fun stuff?
No, no, correct.
So you're gonna.
Probably another twenty?
Yeah, so you're gonna be around.
Yeah, probably about a hundred dollars.
You can be ready though.
Cause that, when, when I met with Greg on it a while back.
Greg Logan?
No, Greg Olson.
Okay.
And, you know, cause he had done all the work for the one that they put up at North Dyson. So we were trying to work off of something similar to when they put that building up for, for North Dyson. And I think they did that for like a hundred and fifty. And that was with an office.
That's an office too. Um, yeah, I'll talk to Morton a little more and, but, and, and there's other metal companies, Morton's just a category.
I wasn't even sure that Greg really felt that he needed heat in the building down there, because it was just really for a storage building to get everything out from.
Well, we had talked about last time, maybe the fans getting the old ones, so that's why we would've done. But is, is there gas down there?
We, we have gas at the street, that's another issue where.
The safety of gas, I just run a quick old Modine in there for, for like five grand a dollar to heat it up, yeah.
Probably gonna end up doing, possibly end up doing for both buildings. Because this Center Streets, um, their main heater for their offices gone, has a crack block. So I'm now working on maybe putting in a mini split for them.
Yeah.
I mean, the oil, ah, the place isn't insulated, we wanna insulate maybe at least the, the roof ceiling, you know, attic.
Yeah, there used to be too much shit up there to insulate it, now Greg had cleaned that thing out about three, four years ago.
Windows would help. If we, if we do the windows, insulate the attic, it should help with the heating.
So right now, we have to do the mini split to get heat in there.
I agree.
Yeah.
So that's, we have to get a quote on that.
Got it, I have a quote on that, we need to get a couple more.
Okay.
But it's not horrible, like a couple grand, so with the time we need, we.
For a minute of heat in there, that's not gonna be.
I have one quote. That's with rebates.
Oh, with, okay.
Yeah, we have this.
What size, what size condenser, how, how much tonnage on?
I have a slip. But we have someone to maybe, the, the oil guy does it, that we have, so he gave me a quote on that, he gave me quotes on new burners, new Modines basically, couple of them. That's getting a little pricey.
Yeah.
The mini split's almost, it's almost too perfect for, for the office.
Yeah, with the rebate and everything.
So there's a lot going on down there and we gotta get done pretty soon.
Well, the mini split needs to be, whatever, do we need three quotes? To purchase the mini split, if it, whatever.
It, it's low price, but it's worth checking.
I can ask one, I know a guy, but.
Okay. Yeah, no, no, it's a couple, I told my caller back.
I'll look around for another quote, that was the first quote we got. And again, I wanna see what direction you guys wanted to go into first, obviously.
Well, I think.
That's pretty pressing.
I think, well, I think that's what we have to do, based on the conversations we had last month, is where does it fall within the priority list of things we have to get done?
Pretty high.
That one's pretty high. And plus, uh, gas is not a guarantee right now. This time of year, they're.
So I talked to him, it's on the other side of Center Street, the main, so they have to dig up Center Street, I mean, uh, one thirty-eight. So, and then they gave a hundred and fifty feet of free pipe, but we're two hundred and thirty, so now we have to pay for the whole thing, whole thing, so.
Yeah, give you a hundred and fifty.
No, we tried, I tried my best and they won't even hear it, so, so it's like now we have to pay for the whole thing and the.
And we might not even get it this year.
Right, right.
So.
It's all timing and what they're doing.
A lot of that. So.
The oil heater we have isn't big enough to do the entire garage.
Yeah.
I mean, it might, you'll get some heat in the other side. You know what I mean, but it might just run all twenty-four seven, I, I don't know. I think mini splits definitely the way to go for the office. And we can, we can look in, starting to look into solar on the. See all that. Treatment plant, yeah, that, and this is out of repair.
Christie County Fire Chiefs?
Irrigation systems on new homes where we.
That's already in our regs.
It is in our.
We found it in our Rosener, it's already there.
Okay.
So I think it's a lot of faucet.
Well, when they, when they come in and they submit their plan, we tell, we give them a notice, okay, we give them an actual notification that says, unless they're digging a well, there is no.
So all new houses come in here first?
Yes.
For, for review? And we can let the plumber inspector know too.
Yeah. And, and we should, we, we should just send, send a copy of that as a reminder to the planning board, the zoning board, the building inspector, the plumbing inspector.
Just a general, just a general note, yeah.
Just to say, hey, just as a friendly reminder, this is part of the rules or regs of the Dyson Water District, if someone has a question about it, please refer them to the water district.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then if someone comes in and says they're gonna put a well in for theirs, yeah, let us know.
We'll have to register it, yeah, we have to register a well, yeah. Hopefully that.
Well, I'm sure that hopefully we could get, I've never met the plumber inspector, but we should get on good terms with him. I mean it. We'll find out.
Subdivision plan, you gave us update on turbidity, subdivision plan increase, you guys have been talking about.
Yeah, that's part of the rates structure, maybe go up on that. We get the.
It is five right now, this is Tina's, maybe for you.
It's five thousand.
Can you? Yes, she said.
Alright.
Talking about possibly going to ten. The town's what, twenty? Do you think we can do that now?
Twenty.
Twenty, even if we went to, I think we should go up that.
Does that have to be in the public?
We, we can put it in there.
What's that, the, we?
Not for the, for the public hearing, so this is the public hearing list.
And it's not money they're not gonna get back if they don't do anything wrong, basically, yeah.
Morton Building Treatment?
Right.
Okay.
It's alright, this one.
Main Street, you wanna fill them in, or you want me to fill them in?
Yeah, just.
So Jeff, Jeff and I met last Friday with Tom Ferry and Mallory. Discuss what they'd like to do, what we'd like to do, we know it's gonna be a process. Uh, the first thing for us that they need to do, and they've actually put an article on special town meeting warrant, is to survey the whole street. So they know what they have to do, land takings, anything that they need to do as part of it, that's the first step. But the one thing they did say is, we don't wanna get into this and then, they, they wanna do a written agreement with us. To make sure whether any of the three of us are here when they get to it or not, that the water district doesn't back out of it in the middle of them.
Well worked.
Yeah, yeah, so, so the first step is the surveying part of it, and then they put an agreement together. But in the meantime, Mallory's gonna put together us to meet with. Pat Haddad's office to see if we can get any money through safe drinking water, any of that type of availability. From the figures that Jeff brought with him, there are some things that the town's gonna do that will save us. Money. You know, some of the paving that, that has to be done will be done by them, so we don't really have to pay, they would've had to do it whether we're part of the project or not, so.
Oh, I get you, okay, on the quote, okay, yeah, I have a rough.
Yeah, on the quote, so.
I have another caller.
They know that this is a project, we're gonna have to, we're, we're gonna have to bond it if things are about, about it, they know that takes time. So that'll all be built into it, as long as there's a commitment from everybody that we're headed in the direction to get it done, we only, it really needs to be done, it's probably, it is the oldest line we have, right, is Main Street? Yeah, it's one of the, one of the oldest lines that we have, and really, one half of it. Doesn't really need to be redone, but if we're gonna do it, we do it all, do it all and do it right.
I mean, I do recommend that if we do do the, if this obviously gets done, that you, the size of that main is appropriate to where. I mean, Elm Street tank's not gonna be there forever, it's just, there's no way. Appropriately size it to where your next tank may be.
So should we get ahold of Ryan to make sure that that's all on the works?
I think once they're. And this all is conjunction with the model.
Right.
So once the model's done and they say, these five spots are the best places.
And, and, and they know that, that we need to finish up our master plan first before we even proceed with this. They, they understand that, that we need all of that information back before we take any step in it, and they know that, so. It's just, Tom just wants the project to get moving.
I mean, it's a major line, especially going to. The power plant, that area, that whole area kind of feeds the power plant in a way, but it comes from the Elm Street tank.
Yeah.
So. If it's gonna stay there and they're not gonna get rid of Elm Street, it's all hydro.
And then they also understand that, and we need to get some more information on this, because I think going back when Cahal was here, going the other way from Elm Street. We were talking to Swansea and Somerset about some things that they have issues that way. And that's one of the things that we think we might be able, that's one the state would have to, you know, help to, to fund the whole thing, so. We're thinking if we can tie some of it in and get Pat, Haddad involved in it, that maybe we can get a significant piece of funding as part of it, so.
Like you mean like saying that we're gonna tie into Somerset?
No, no, well, well, it, just, yeah, yeah, the whole regional, talking regionally, rather than just talking about, hey, we just need, cause they're not gonna pay for us to just replace mains. But if we're doing other things that tie in regionally and under the Safe Drinking Water Act, we might be able to get some money. If it gets funded, unlike the last time we got promised three hundred thousand dollars, got, saw this big check and, and then. Deval Patrick left and Charlie Baker came in and didn't fund the environmental bond bill, so we didn't get a dime of the three hundred thousand bucks we were gonna get, so. But yeah, that's gonna be a bonding project and, and, and we'll see, you know, that's the first thing they're gonna tell us, well, you can go borrow under SRF. And get a little interest rate, you know, that's what they tell us every time we go looking for money, but. Pat likes dining, so she does, that's, you know, so she, she wants to try and work some stuff for us, so. I don't think we scheduled the next meeting, I think they were gonna wait till after the, uh, special town meeting to make sure that they, they get the fifteen thousand dollars for the, um.
For the survey.
For the survey, yeah, she sent an email today.
That survey, that survey just, is that just for all the piping or is it for land or?
It's really for them, it's really for them, because they need to know what cuts they need to do, what handicaps, yeah, because they wanna put some sidewalk in.
Oh, that makes, okay.
It's all kinds of stuff.
Yeah.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, if they wanna get funded, I'm sure it's gonna get the.
Yeah, yeah, so he wants to put this here.
He doesn't have enough, uh, chapter ninety to even do it.
Yeah, that's a big one.
Is this, what, the sidewalk from one thirty-eight?
Not over, over to that, oh, it's too, oh, right.
No.
No, I think it only goes to like the fire station.
Yeah, stops, it stops somewhere.
Oh, really? Or where the fire.
No, it goes, no, it does, it goes up.
Goes to the library?
Goes to the library, I think that's it.
Pretty much.
Somewhere right there.
Pretty much for ex-houseish, yeah.
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 Yeah, so. Yeah. I think we just. GIS mapping?
That's a good one.
Town administrative grants, that's along the same thing, same thing with the fuel depot, they're moving forward with it, you know, we just have to, we'll, we'll participate in it, but, you know.
They haven't asked for it all about yet.
No, but. And then, uh, Strawberry Fields, he's been, there's nothing moving on that.
No, we have a meeting on the fifteenth.
Changed it quite a bit, didn't it?
Yeah.
I haven't seen the proposed new grant, so.
Had a glance at it, that's really about it, I haven't gotten it, yeah. But changed some things, but meetings on the fifteenth, October, next week.
But you still haven't had the walkthrough, right?
No, no.
Okay, new business, special meeting warrant. So it's in front of us. We need to set a date. We have certified free cash now.
How much total again?
Seven.
Seven eighty-eight, three fifty-six.
And the proposals on here spend?
Oh, um, it's two hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-one out of free cash.
How much was it?
Two eighty-one.
Two eighty-one, four twenty-one. The balance of five oh six, nine thirty-five. I had one that was reasonably appropriate here and I don't. If you want, offer added.
Oh, that's, the reasonably appropriate is just to replenish that line that we've already spent?
What's not on here is if the union.
Yeah, right, you can't put that, you, you guys know that, right, you can't put, you can't put that funding in the budget until after the contract is settled.
Yeah.
You can't fund it, I lost.
So the two hundred and eighty-one comes out of the free cash of, comes out of the seven eighty-eight that we do have?
Correct, we should have the five oh six.
Which would leave us at how much left?
Five oh six, nine thirty-five.
How much did we carry over in free cash from last year, what was the balance of free cash at the end of last year?
It was three forty-one, I think we carried over.
Alright, so we really have four hundred and forty thousand of new money, about, about four hundred thousand of new money.
Okay, so we're getting about four hundred thousand a year. Free cash technically.
Yeah, we get a lot, we had a, I don't know.
It was nine fifty-six.
Yeah, it was higher a few, a few years ago, for like a couple years in a row. It was significantly higher.
We had a lot of capital improvements issues, so.
Yeah, yeah. So. What did, an article ten last year, what did we, what number did we use? How much?
Three hundred thousand.
We used three hundred last year, but what did we have, we used three hundred each of the last two years, I think, right? But it was.
I think it was three, three, two.
Okay.
I think the year before that, we might not have done any.
I'm seeing three, three, two, so it was three hundred thousand last year, three hundred thousand, two hundred thousand. So, and all these articles on here, are they, are these based on your list, Jeff, of what we need, or not need, or?
Definitely subject to change, but the whole filter, where's the filter on it? Seventy thousand?
Oh, I didn't think of that.
I just mean a general.
Oh, you did, yeah.
Yeah, I thought you wanted to do the core.
I do.
Test first and. So here's the normal ones.
So no, we're gonna have a, unless we settle the contract tonight.
The Aggie school.
We're gonna have to have another special after that, so if something doesn't get on this one, we can put it on. That one we're gonna have to have when we, to fund the, uh, to fund the contract, so.
What's that? The list, oh, is that your, is that the?
Yes.
Nice. How much money are you spending?
And we have till seven days before the meeting.
To change it.
Right.
To vote a change, you would.
I have to post it seven, seven days before.
So I guess my thing would be, on this list that you have here, Jeff?
Yes.
What has made it onto this here?
Copy machine did, right?
Yes.
I don't worry about a copy machine. I'm wondering, I love the Chris stuff.
I have the, I have the log.
What are the balances in that two stabilization accounts?
Um, stabilization's two hundred and twenty-five and capital improvement stabilization is two fifty.
Oh, yeah. I, I gotta pay this, so. Alright, you have to fill me in.
I was just getting really caught up.
I'm confused, I'm not, I'm not a finance guy, I mean, right?
Do you wanna go into recess?
Do you wanna go into recess?
Yes.
While, while he's in recess?
You wanna go into recess?[1742.22]
Yeah. While he's out, yeah, that's fine.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Can we do that?
Yeah, so no, no, that 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 two hundred and fifty K that's in capital stabilization.
Two hundred and fifty thousand, yeah.
That's available for us to utilize for some of Jeff's list also.
Yep, yep.
That's what it's there for.
What about the two twenty-five in the regular stabilization?
It's there, but they, they, they always recommend that you keep a minimum of five percent in cash reserves. And I think our budget's, what's our budget, about two point five million, so we're a little bit above it, but.
No, that's fine, I'm just asking, yeah, I'm not a finance guy, I'm just asking a question, so I know.
No, it's there, it's there if necessary, but um.
So you always wanna keep the two twenty-five in reserve, that's like a biggie bag.
Yeah, that's a stabilization, that's just, you know, so.
And then, do they have recommendations on the capital stabilization fund that we have?
No, so what they recommend is that you keep you in in reserves between your stabilizations and your free cash. Uh, anywhere from eight to twelve percent of your total annual operating budget.
Okay. What's our annual operating for two and a half?
About two and a half, no, you're two point six. So ten percent, you know, we're, we're right around there, we're always right around there. No, we never had a capital stabilization account up until.
We have put fifty thousand in here so five years ago.
Yeah, for five years ago.
Nice.
So. Should we have a total cost estimate on what, if we did every single thing on here, what it would cost us?
Um, right, that's easy enough to do. Some are waiting for more quotes or.
I'm thinking seven and eight are totally separate from what?
Oh, yeah.
From, from, from the maintenance.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But from, from a, a maintenance standpoint to address.
Yeah.
The issues that we, I'll use the word discussed.
Mm-hmm, last month.
There's three, three major, I'll narrow it down to three major ones, that.
Okay.
Well development, exploration, you know, Cedar, Brook. This one over here.
Number.
What line, what line are you?
Number one.
Okay.
I'm still working on what that would even take.
That's alright, that's alright.
That one's huge.
Yeah.
That's.
That's number.
One, A, B, and C.
Yeah, okay.
Fine law. Uh, and then number two, I, I firmly believe that we, 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 we should at least look into ice picking.
Okay.
We just don't have the flows to get the stuff that's in the mains out.
Agreed.
Sixty years worth of damage.
Yeah. So, so.
It's huge ticker, it's three hundred grand.
Three hundred.
Roughly three hundred grand.
Three hundred.
It's a big tick.
Yeah.
To do all the main drags.
Yeah.
And then you probably, probably gonna do more, but for now, that's a lot. And the filters. So those three.
Those three.
The filters are kind of, it's more, I wanna get a core sample.
So that's, that's seventy thousand per filter?
So it's two hundred and say.
Roughly, because if there's something broken inside when they start taking the media out.
Honestly, see a hundred thousand dollar filter.
Exactly what I would say.
Yeah, so, but, how, what do we have, three? We have three.
Yes.
But they could, do they all have to be done at once?
They can't be.
They can't be.
No chance.
Do one per year or something like that, do one per year, that's a start, it's something, it's anything, right, I would, would love to do all three.
That's if it needs to be done, I wanna do a core sample.
So if we put, if we, if we put a special article for seventy thousand dollars. Would it be done in this fiscal year?
Yeah, we can do that this year.
Okay.
But again, of course, I put a core sample is very important.
So what, what, so it's forty, forty-five thousand for three loads on the ice picking?
That gets you about fifteen thousand feet of load.
Alright, so on these, do you have a priority of?
On the pipe.
Do you have a priority of where you would start?
Oh, yeah.
Alright, so. Alright, so number six is a must now. That's, that has to be done this fall, that's the.
That needs to be done.
Okay, so that's a hundred percent you need. Okay, number five, you need that done as far as grounding for what, lightning?
I have someone coming in tomorrow for that.
So five and six are a must.
Hundred percent.
Number four is a must because that's a DF tree that you gotta get the trees off the power lines.
Just need to call me.
Yeah, well, we still have to.
Do we have money in the budget?
That one's on, the trees are on the.
That's on.
It's already, it's already on the warrant.
But that's still a priority, so six, so four, five, and six are priority this fall.
I agree.
Okay, you're talking seventy thousand maybe for a filter, if that's, you do the one. The one per year.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You're saying that's a must for this winter.
Core sample first.
Yes.
Okay.
What's the core, you, you keep saying core sample, what is, for, for me?
We just drain it down, drain it down.
Yeah.
So you have fifty going into stabilization.
They told me how to do it.
All the, all the media.
Anyone literally take media, put it in a bag and send it out to a lab.
Okay. So as of right now, three through six are priority.
I believe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And then.
Do you have any, sorry, do you have any ideas roughly on five and six, numbers wise?
What did we say with the electrical last time, was three grand? It's three, four, five grand. The grounding though might, you know, you're.
Alright, so, alright.
And what's the mini splitter?
Five hundred?
Three thousand.
Five grand?
What, the mini split?
Yeah, incidental and everything, so you do incidentals with five grand.
Might have to pay five to get a rebate.
I already had the generator done.
You already have the generator?
Yeah, article eleven.
Okay.
The trees are on there.
The trees are on.
Trees are on the warrant already, so that's part of the two hundred and eighty-one thousand that you already have.
Yeah, we're, we're pretty close to getting an appropriate.
So, so the only ones that. Aren't on here would be the filter. And the electrical, what you said.
And the electric said the ice picking stopped there.
Ice picking stopped.
So it's, it would be the filter and the ice picking.
What was, what was number one?
I don't know how much to, I, I asked, I talked to him a few times, I'm working some numbers up.
I put the article down at the bottom, but no cash on it.
Alright, let me just have one quick question. If you, I understand the ice picking. Does the plant need more work other than the ice picking? If you had to prioritize the valves. And everything else around here.
I have been fixed, last week I forgot to mention it, I had, Stalkers was in here last week. Worked on it, the.
The gate valves?
Yeah, the uh. So you know exactly though, um, yeah, he was in last week in repair.
Alright, so why don't we, the, the transfer to the stabilization, capital stabilization that's on here. Why don't we change that article to, to fund the ice picking? No need to put it in the capital stabilization if we're gonna do the project.
Wait, say, wait, just some follow.
So, article, article five that's proposed on here is to transfer. Is it five, no, article six is to transfer fifty thousand dollars into the capital stabilization account.
Okay.
Instead of doing that, why don't we uh change that article to fund the forty-five thousand dollars for the three loads? To at least allow the starting of the ice picking, then put a separate article on here for seventy thousand dollars to do the filter. Which, which is an additional seventy thousand out of free cash.
Is it really seventy thousand, is it a hundred thousand or seventy thousand?
You may come into problems, so you might wanna.
Yeah, well, we talked about that before, it's seventy just to change the media and the tanks need just to change, that's just the material, that's not the labor and the welding.
So let's, so let's, so, so instead of this year putting any money into stabilization, let's eliminate the, the, the five and the six.
Straight just then put a media in.
The five and the six. Do the hundred thousand dollars, take another forty-five thousand dollars out for the ice picking.
Alright, so a hundred thousand for the.
Yeah, so we eliminate, yeah, we eliminate five and six and combine those and make that an article to, for, for the tank.
Yeah, tank stabilization.
For the filters, yeah.
Tank filter, yep.
And then.
And six will be forty-five for the ice picking.
Well, yeah, fi- yeah, five would be that one, and then six would be the ice picking out of free cash for forty-five thousand.
So let me ask you this, the forty-five thousand for the ice picking. Is that worth, I, I see three hundred thousand and I see forty-five thousand for three loads.
Mm-hmm.
What does that forty-five thousand dollars get us?
Three, I can give you the exact footage.
So three loads, does that give us a couple?
Fifteen thousand feet. Per like eight inch water. Something for a mile?
Yeah, something like that.
Twenty-five, twenty, hundred feet?
It's basically you run, you run William Street or run.
Last man in, you get more.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good start, we did some ice picking a while back.
I'm sure.
Was it on Tremont, I thought it was on Williams.
The problem with the ice picking is if we're gonna start here and go and branch out.
Was it Williams or was it?
If you wanna start with your sources, right, so start with your sources and clean, you wanna clean, you don't wanna clean back, you wanna clean out.
Right.
So you clean this way, you know, might clean a section, but then, you got, we, we gotta continue with it, at least, don't.
Right.
I don't wanna do a little like we did, I wanted to do it.
We did it to see if it would help Greg's continuing.
And my next question, is, is there a way to tell, is there a way to know if it works?
Then, I can have him come in here and do you guys.
Yeah, I, I.
I would like this, I would honestly, I don't know what it is.
Yeah.
Well, Swansea's doing it now, but we, all three of us, me and Swansea too, right?
And I was there for this, I went down there, it was like, come on down, came down, saw the bench, they do bench tests right on site.
Yeah.
It's pretty phenomenal.
It was good when they, it, it was good when they came in and, and did a presentation to us. So why don't we, why don't we put that article on, so at least we have money set aside for it, then have them come in and do the presentation? Because there's nothing to say that we can't go back and put more money towards it, or if we decide we're not gonna do it. That we close the article out later on and then that money goes back into free cash.
Well, I don't want you go with me to Swansea, we'll go talk to Jeff suddenly. He's had a ton of, he's doing his entire town, he's been doing about five, six hundred grand.
Well, Tottenham relined their entire town.
Huge money into it because of all the issues. The calls you got.
Yeah.
And you should talk to him, I've talked to him a little bit about it.
Yeah.
I think what's.
Well, once the master plan is done, and the rain structure, then, I mean, there's gonna be no way we're gonna on as far as.
Again, I have no problem waiting on that, it's not, not a horrible thing to wait on, maybe do it next year, but I think we need to do it. But we can get data from them, they have the same water we have.
Well, we can always spend the money next, I mean, we can do it next summer.
Know what I mean?
Yeah, we can, right.
It doesn't have to be, get the money now.
Right, it's still, the money, the money's still gonna be in either capital stabilization or free cash.
They're coming back to do it in Swansea, so we might get a better price if they just have to stench this area, we will get a better price.
Before we, we commit to the money, have them come in and give us a presentation, that, those guys are law, they're all salesmen, that's.
Yeah, you gave me one, I, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's their job.
Absolutely. Alright, so you're gonna get rid of five and six, and then you're saying putting.
We're gonna put the filter on for a hundred thousand dollars.
That's on another article?
Five.
Yeah, we'll tell you, that'll be five.
You might. If you're.
And number six would be the, would become the ice picking then for forty-five, correct?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna hold off, we'll do that in, in another special, after they come and give us a presentation.
You can't do it now, anyway, they're gone.
Yeah.
So just get rid of six, all good.
One, A, B, and C.
I mean, he's working on something to find, to look for water on C to one.
Do you have an idea what the cost of one, A, B, and C would be?
I really don't, I really, I'm, I, I don't think it's gonna be cheap. I think you're looking at, if you did all three, actually, we have a lot of data on the Walker Street.
Yeah, didn't they say it's like ten years for that, should we try to push?
Yeah, we, I think, I think we did all of this.
No.
We didn't do Cedar, did we, we did one behind Cedar.
Walker.
We did all, yeah, we have all.
We do have a lot of data, exactly, we have a ton of data for Walker, I found it, we brought it for them.
Okay.
So we put away, uh, put aside two hundred and fifty thousand last time for well source.
Well, so, is that still sitting in?
Oh, not that.
Oh, yeah, we spent, we did.
That was two thousand nine?
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we, well, we took a lot of free cash to put sourcing.
Yes.
Should we test the water again with uh Somerset with the Buckstreet well?
Testing the waters? Yes, because.
Well, then we have to lease it for them. Is that still an option, are you gonna try to pursue that again, or are you thinking of just doing it? I mean, we can't buy it, they're not gonna sell it, but I mean.
The prob, the problem is. Because of the way we prepare our water versus what is available out of that, right?
No, 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 we might have to do some, some uh, you know, some mini plant there, but it wouldn't be anything to look at.
Okay.
It'll be very small.
Well, they take the floor out, we're not having chlorine.
Yeah, we'd have to just see what they're making.
One gallon, yeah.
Like it's grounded.
Yeah.
Chris said you give me all their data.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll ask them again, right now.
From what I've heard, it's basically a two to one vote right now against.
Against it?
Against that.
Oh, yeah, no, they won't sell it, but maybe we can lease it.
Either way. So we're leasing, it's two to one against. But if we uh have the land across the street.
Right, well, that's the thing too, it's the land across the street too.
That's still the option?
Yeah, and I think that's something that we can sit down with our local legislators about. That's, that's more of the things along the line that, cause they have to, DEP has to be involved in whatever we do. Whether we're taking it over from Somerset or we're taking over that land and wanna draw water out of it, on the other side of the street, they have to be involved in it, so.
I had already told them. They will allow us.
Yeah.
If we found land across the street, say there was landfill sale there was across the street and we were able to find a water source there. You're probably looking at five years, six, seven years.
They told me ten.
Yeah.
Five to ten years. DEP told me ten.
Walker Street, not so much, it's right within our uh zone one, and Cedar Street's right in the zone one, it's right at that, that would be quicker.
There, there's an aquifer right off of Somerset Ave. This is zone three, I think it's a zone three, that's on that property where Strawberry Fields is. That, that is listed on the state's list of available drinking water, so.
I think the other option we should look into too, not, at least if we do two out of the three filters. Let's just say that if it was cheaper or a lot more water quantity, go and z on a one filter instead of spending a hundred.
Right, and the same people that would talk to you about the ice picking.
Own z, so.
At the same time.
He was supposed to.
A hundred grand on redoing that third filter.
I think we get it, I think we get it set aside so we don't have to wait, once we make that determination.
If they come in and say, why are you spending two hundred grand rehabbing these when you can spend four or whatever, just get this whole place brand new with the. I don't know, but I think that's definitely worth looking.
Salesman in here?
He needs notes.
I rely on it, that's alright.
It's safe enough and give it to me.
Um, yeah, that, that actually was supposed to have him come in and give me an idea of what it would cost.
No, it's alright, I mean.
I mean, he's kind of a subsidiary, subsidiary of the guy I would have to run for the ice pick. Cause this Walker Street well, as, as great as it would be to, to, to get into here.
It's dirty, isn't it?
Yeah, the, the filters would do fine. It's just, you know, yes, we have more water, you just can't filter it. You know, you just can't.
And one of the Walker Street wells, the screen is failing too, right? That was the last time that we just had it serviced.
Yeah, Eric said the screen is ripped. In the well, we might have to re-sleeve it. Yeah, I guess he got some rock when he was.
Yeah, the next time we did it.
That was another, um, we can try to redevelop C to one, and the same people coming in, it's, they have a different way of doing it. They seem to have good results with it, getting back the water that you once had.
So as of right now, are you having a problem with filtration? Are you having a problem with the amount of water coming into the treatment plant?
So.
Are you?
Our well's low right now.
Next couple of days should help.
Yeah, well, like six inches of rain, right?
So you're noticing a difference now. Wells are very low, we're babying them right now, the filters, you know.
Alright, no, that's fine.
We're into a different level of water right now.
Alright, damn.
You still not really pumping out of Cedar?
We just, we did slow it down.
Okay.
Pump more out of Walker. Walker has.
Okay.
The Walker's holding a lot.
I can always tell when I drive by.
A lot better.
The park on Somerset Ave, that water level's a low in that pond at Memorial Park on one thirty-eight, has no water in it. On Somerset Ave, in Taunton.
Uh-oh.
Oh, to the, or the left hand side?
Oh, left hand side, alright, oh, really?
Yeah, it's almost empty. Yeah, two summers.
Straight to little, little time, nothing there.
Okay, go back here.
There's no water in the second van, so I think it's a whole lot.
But that's old of it, we're lucky, because that's long.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He just. Okay.
Alright, sorry.
It's down.
It's down.
People up on the other side. Two C is basically useless at this point. We barely run it. We run it just to get in some flow, but shut it off.
Okay. Alright, so that meets what?
I just wanted, I, I, I want you to have whatever you need on here to get things up to speed.
Yeah.
Or as much up to speed as we can without spending a million bucks.
I think, I think us finding water is huge for the future. I know, I have the data that you got, when you guys did the study, I have that data. But I think the three places we're looking, well, this one we have data on, this is good. But two of the places we're looking, we didn't look on Brook, and we didn't, what, where they have the land now. And I'd be interested to see what happens on Cedar. If we can push that well into the land that is for sale. Or try to redevelop its sewers way, which they guarantee.
I don't know. I mean, that piece of land that's, that we might be interested in buying, there's gotta be water back there if there's water in.
Well, I mean, it's not. I say we take it by eminent domain, because there's no other use for it but us.
So how do you do that? Do you say that we need water, so we get to?
They're asking for.
He's asking a foolish amount of money. It's not, the land, yeah, the land's not worth it.
Which one?
That's the realtor.
Where?
Cedar.
Cedar.
They were asking one twenty-five or one fifty, something like that.
Oh, a hundred fifty thousand.
Yeah, for the lot, and it's not, the only access to the lot is.
Is it twenty?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's real well.
Yeah, the only access to the lot is through our property. It's landlocked. It has no other use other than.
I think that's what they said, like, thank you.
Well, should we offer them that? Should we offer?
We're taking it anyway. You know what I mean? Why not?
We don't have, it, it has to be, um. We didn't have it appraised. It's, I, I think the tax value is half of what they were asking for, and so. And if the tax value's that, then it's probably worth less, worth less than that.
So, so twenty acres, is it worth thirty thousand?
I don't know what the tax value is on the, on that piece of land.
How do you come up with those? It's only worth anything to us. Is it worth twenty acres for thirty thousand?
Possibly, possibly.
So how do you come up with a number and go back at them?
Yeah.
So you either do this or.
Right, right, we can, we, we can, we can make them an offer.
I don't know.
We can, we can make them an offer.
Honestly, Cedar Street was taken by eminent domain.
Yeah, right.
The other side.
I mean, twenty acres for thirty grand doesn't seem bad to me.
I mean, yeah, like you said, a hundred twenty-five, no, but it's worth it.
It's worth it.
It's worth it.
If you can't get on your land.
I mean, can we give them a, can we throw a number at them?
Yeah, we could.
Yeah.
Oh, it's assessed at one fifty-two. They paid twenty-three, right, they paid twenty-three hundred, that was, that was in two thousand fifteen.
For nothing.
Nothing.
It's been on the, I mean, is it still even listed on the market? This is old, this is, this was a while ago. This was, the listing date was, uh, a year and a half ago.
I talked to him.
They're attaching something you have no use for, and you can't do anything with.
I talked to him. Did you, because his listing ended in January.
The water company is gonna come looking for.
If you want it, be simple, take this one.
Yeah, before we can put a warrant to spend it, you have to, you have to, you have to have a purchase and sale agreement in place. And then the town, then the district votes to fund.
But.
So I would just like to.
If the land's useless to us.
So can we throw an offer thirty?
I think we go into executive session and discuss that. It's a negotiation. We don't wanna publicize.
Got you.
Go on.
Yeah, I mean, you can.
We can add that to it.
And it would protect our land, if anything.
Right, right.
Well, you moved C to one back once already, right? Cause if that's what the pump house in the front, that went totally dry and then they went behind it. When was the last time that was redeveloped?
I have that on my, just.
Been a while?
Three years ago, four years ago.
Yeah, they've all been down over the last.
Alright, so, cause I'm kinda confused right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. How much more than, so the, the hundred we're taking from this comes from Article five and six, so that doesn't change the two eighty-one that we.
Right, so another forty-five, and if you do the filter, another, I don't know, the filter's already here.
The filter's already built in.
So another forty-five.
Okay, so we're at three twenty-six out of free cash?
Two eighty-one.
So there's four fifty-one left in, or four fifty-two left in free cash.
So, so we just, so the two eighty-one.
Plus forty-five.
Plus forty-five.
Yeah.
Okay. The three twenty-six.
Yeah.
Out of free cash.
So, and then you deduct out of, I, I said it was five oh seven because we have nine hundred thirty-five. I rounded up to five oh seven.
I don't have a number.
So you take the forty-five out of that is, is, uh, four fifty-two left in free cash.
If we took, put money away for, uh, the well development.
I think we have to have a number to that, which we, we have, you know, we have stabilization.
Hopefully this is something low.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
I know, I know, some people aren't gonna agree with me on this, but I would say on Article ten, of the two fifty-two that we have left. We, we reduce the tax rate by two hundred K, cause you can't put that all out at the same, in my opinion. Uh, that we take two hundred K, that still leaves us in our reserves, two hundred and fifty in free cash, two hundred and twenty-five in stabilizations, and two hundred in capital stabilization. So we have like seven hundred thousand.
Article ten, which is on the map, you know.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have two articles.
Okay, sorry, I have to use, my fault, my fault.
I didn't change the numbers.
Reduce the tax rate, reduce whose tax rate? The, the town?
The, the, no, the tax rate that we tax the ratepayers of the district debt.
What is the benefit by giving two hundred dollars back?
Well, under, under the bylaws and under the Mass General Law, the districts are required to give the money back to the ratepayers.
Where does it say that? Because it seems like.
If you read Mass General Laws, under, under.
But what, what you, my, my thing would be, the article that you sent us the other day. The one, the e, the email that you sent us.
Oh, I, yeah, that was just the newsletter.
Right, but it, it said, we can use that free cash for capital expenditures.
Yes.
And we wouldn't have to give it back. But if we used it all for capital expenditures, we wouldn't have to give any of that back.
Right.
My thought being. Why not spend the money to rehabilitate this place from the, the, not neglect, but the lack of maintenance and everything over the last ten, fifteen years? To get it all to speed and running, so we don't have to worry about spending more money down the road.
Well, yeah. We're spending three hundred and, three hundred twenty-six thousand dollars.
Understood.
Keeping two hundred and fifty thousand of it in reserves for other purposes of doing that. And then giving a portion of it back to the ratepayer to reduce what, which, of which they paid, to reduce what the, the operating expenditures of the water district.
Can we use that two hundred K to help pay for Main Street? Or, I'm, I'm just thinking outside the box, because once we start, you know. Yeah, it's great if we give it back, but then we have to do a, a, a main replacement on Main Street for three million bucks. Where's that money coming from? Then we gotta raise the tax rate.
So what you're asking the ratepayer to pay roughly, roughly, because if you don't give it back. An increase over the previous year of whatever our cost increases were for this year, plus an additional. Three hundred thousand dollars, plus whatever we have to vote at the next district meeting for, um. Whatever the contract negotiations are. So I, I just think it's, it's a, it's a big task. I'm not asking for the same amount we reduced the tax rate at last year. I'm backing it off, um.
Well, the thing that I have a problem with is, all these problems that were coming into effect now, they, they've been growing for the last few years. More than just a few. And like Jason said, why are we giving two hundred thousand dollars back when we have a three and a half million dollar project on Main Street gonna come up?
Well, that's gonna be a bonded project that the ratepayers have to vote on. It's not gonna be done through this and that, that's, it's just.
So if we have to give something back, I'd say give twenty thousand back and keep the rest.
Twenty thousand does nothing. Think about the, think about it this way. You're gonna, if, if we didn't, and then I'm just throwing a rough number on. If, if you take the tax rate from, uh, I think we, what were we last year? A dollar watt?
I'm sorry, you.
What was that tax rate last year? A dollar twenty?
Yeah, but if we, so, this still, it still doesn't make sense to me. This is not making sense to me, because if we spend another hundred thousand on a modern building for the, for distribution tomorrow. There's another hundred out of the two hundred that we're giving back, then we'll put the building up then this year. And we'll spend the two hundred thousand on stuff that we need here. Why are we giving it back to the ratepayers when we already have the money? This is what's not making sense to me. And that's why I'm asking questions, because.
So, uh, I look at it as, take, uh, you guys can both take, you know what the values of your houses are. If we don't give the money back to reduce it, which the last time we didn't do it was two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. The tax rate was a dollar sixty-three per thousand.
That was okay, and we didn't give any money back that year.
Didn't give any, any money back. In the last two years, because we've put money back into reducing the tax rate, and, and we've added more houses. The tax rate is down in FY nineteen to a dollar thirteen. So if you go back, if you wanna stop moving it back towards that. If you add, you're, you're gonna add fifty cents per thousand in our tax rate back to, back, back to the residents. It's gonna go up anyway. We know it's gonna go up, because we're not gonna use as much anyway. But if you, if you, if you decide not to use the whole thing, let's say an average. Yeah, and, and it fluctuates just like the, the tax rate does in normal, depending on values of houses and whatever, but to the average three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. It's gonna be, the water, the water rate, the water tax increase will be. Hundred seventy-five bucks.
So what, then we don't give the money back for a hundred seventy-five dollars? No way. We don't have any money for, we, everything that, I'm not saying that. Everything that I hear here, we have no money, we have no money. Every time we ask for something, there's no money, there's no money, no money. We can't give that money back.
I disagree. I disagree. We, we just sat here and went through, and, and went through the whole list of what the, um.
I'd say we keep it for a year. I'd say we keep it for a year, and then we'll see what happens next year. We don't have any water, we need another building on a treatment plant, or on a distribution, and there's still more stuff wrong up here, and we're giving the money back, and we don't have money for Main Street. This, this isn't even making sense to me. I understand where you're coming from, we're lowering the tax rate, and we're burdening the taxpayers. But there's still problems here that have been neglected for years, and we've still been giving the money back every year that we don't have to spend here. Why wasn't it spent? I don't know. Why wasn't the money, was it not allocated? Was it?
No, it's not, that's not, it, it's because we, the free cash comes from the excess revenues that you bring in. From, from the purchase of water and the taxes that you collect from, from.
The residents.
And when you have the amount of free cash that we have, and trust me, we, that, we have never given it all back. That's like, we're not saying, let's take all our free cash and, uh, and.
I don't agree on two hundred dollars. You wanna get fifty back, that's fine, but I still think we should have a nest egg of.
So, the, 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 the one thirteen, is that this year's tax rate?
Yes, right, one thirteen, that's the FY two thousand nineteen tax rate, correct? Yeah.
This one here, okay. So, just out of curiosity, we give this two hundred thousand dollars back, what does the tax rate do? What will it go to?
It'll go to keep it as close to that as we can. It's still gonna go up. It's gonna go up because we're giving two hundred, we're reducing the tax rate by a hundred thou, a hundred thousand dollars less than we did in the previous year.
So if we give the money back to the taxpayers, then we need to go up on the rates. How are we gonna increase the money? For projects that we haven't had before? This is, this is my question, is we never spent the money on repairs in thirteen years. How do we get more money here?
But then, stop saying that. It's not like the people, we haven't done anything here for thirteen years. That's not true. That's not.
Major, major, we have major repairs that are coming up.
Alright, we, right, right.
We do, major. So how do we get major money to do the major repairs?
You have to go out, you either bond the project, you go out to the ratepayers and you ask them to pay it. That's how you do it.
Isn't the same thing as raising the tax rate?
But you're. You, you, you guys vote what, what you wanna vote. You can let the district ratepayers decide if they like the idea.
Are we doing the same thing?
When the phone calls come, that my tax rate at the water district went from a dollar thirteen to a dollar fifty-five. A hundred seventy-five dollars might not mean much to you, but it means, it means something else to somebody else in the district.
When's the last time we raised the tax, when was the last time we raised the water bill? I didn't want to raise the new house new tap fee from twenty-five dollars to five dollars.
Two thousand sixteen is when we raised the rates the last time.
Went from.
Was the last time we changed it, I should say.
Went, went from a dollar one in two thousand thirteen, then it went to one twenty-seven.
Well, that's the fact, that's, that's only about fifty percent of what we collect.
Yeah, we need to, to raise.
Yeah, but we keep saying about.
But that's what the rates, that's, that's what, that's what the rate studies.
The master plan, they're doing it.
In, in reality, you want my, you want my opinion?
I don't know when the rate study's coming in.
Yeah, when do you think that'll be? Another year?
You want my real opinion? We should eliminate the tax rate completely, and everything should be based on usage, because.
How do you do that? Well, that's all, I mean.
That's where we should be. The reason we have a tax rate the, the, the way it is, is, is because we're paying for this building. The tax rate, the tax rate would have been sixty-five cents per thousand if we didn't have to pay the note every year. So, you know.
You know, once this bill is paid off.
Yeah, but we're gonna be dead in the water for those.
We're gonna have to build something on the dry rail or something.
Taking videos today?
You're going the way we're going.
Just for the regularly, we hadn't regularly before.
Do a bill, design and operate for.
Oh, that's ready to?
Almost.
I, I guess, I guess my thought is, is, we, we have.
Eight.
Yeah, we're lowering the.
It's a philosophical difference, that's fine.
No, but, but, my thing is, we're lowering tax rates, lowering tax rates, lowering tax rates, right? But then, at the end of the day, we're gonna have to get, make more money and get more money to, for, for water mains, for new buildings, for all that kind of stuff, and the tax rate's gonna go up.
But the determination whether we have it in free cash or we don't, has, we, we don't have the ability to say, because it sits in free cash, we're gonna spend it. That's up to the ratepayers. At a meeting, we have to put a warrant together to spend that money. That can't be just be you walking into the office and saying, or Jeff walking into the office and saying, I need to spend a hundred thousand dollars to fix this, can we take it out of free cash? Just like we just talked about, how, where does the money come from? We have to go and ask the ratepayers for it. So you can either give it back to them in, in a, in a tax reduction and go back and ask them for it, or you can leave it there, not give them the tax reduction, and still go back and ask them for it. So, I just, I, I, I just feel that, that, that it's money collected from the ratepayers. It's not, doesn't affect what we've requested. We put everything on the table, what we requested. We still have seven hundred thou, we'll still have almost seven hundred thousand dollars sitting in our reserves, between the two stabilizations and what we have left in free cash. To not give the taxpayer a break and reduce their tax rate again, or keep it roughly where it was, or a hundred thousand dollars. You're gonna, you remember, it's not the whole town that pays this tax rate. It's just the users. So, a hundred thousand dollars across the whole town, not a big deal. Two hundred thousand dollars across the number of users that we have, that means a significant amount to the ratepayers in the district.
I understand it's a big deal, but we need to spend more money. So I just don't understand how we can give the same amount or less, like you said, we're giving.
Cause you originally wanted to give back three hundred thousand, now we're down to two hundred.
No, we gave three hundred thousand because we had a significant.
Last year.
I, I mean, we, we had a, yeah, yeah, we had a significant amount of free cash.
How do you, but we wanna, we need to spend more, it's not because we want to.
There's one thing I would like to look at, is, so, I mean, our water quality coming out of here is pretty good.
Coming out of here, it is, it's really good.
But the damage of sixty years of iron and agings in the pipes is, is, you know, it's taking its toll out there. So. That's, again, happens the ice pick.
I'm, I'm, I'll use, I'll use an example from the town side.
And show them we were doing this.
I'll give you an example from the town side. The town, the town has about one point three mil, we have a lot of projects that need to be done in the town too. But the, the town is taking whatever the payment of the police station is. Would you have the townspeople voted to tax it out? But we're taking what that payment is, taking it out of free cash to reduce the tax rate by that number, so they don't have to pay for that police station for that one year. Reducing the tax rate. The town does it, all communities do it. And Matt, Matt, you're here. So you've read, you know what the guidelines are in the state laws on districts, about returning the money at the end of the, it really says that. That you return the money to excess funds unless you have a specific purpose. That's supposed to be returned to the district payers. Doesn't always happen that way.
Right.
But that is what's in the guidelines, correct?
I'd have to look at them.
But if we spent that money before this meeting.
But I know it was, it was limited on what can be carried over to your year.
Well, we can't spend it without going to the meeting.
Right.
You can't spend it.
You can't spend the free cash, you have to go, you have to go.
The discussion we're having here, are we gonna fill that in quickly?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, there's improvements that need to be made here, repairs.
Yeah.
That are escalating in cost. So. Tens of thousands of dollars. So we'd have a discussion on how much money do you give back to lower the tax rate at the end of the year? We, some people wanna give back a lot, some people don't wanna give back any. And use that money for capital expenditures.
So here's, so for the last three years, we've had roughly eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars in free cash. We've spent a portion of it, put a portion of it into the stabilization accounts, and then given. A significant amount, a three, about three hundred thousand dollars back in reducing the tax rate, but we've also rolled over some free cash every year.
Yeah.
So this year, free cash was at seven.
Seven eighty.
Seven eighty-eight.
Okay.[1731.35]
We have Warren Articles to spend three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars on upgrades, repairs, necessary things to, to the district. And then um, one of the articles is, additional article is to reduce the tax rate by two hundred, which would leave about, what was it, two, two twenty?
Two sixty-two.
Two sixty-two still in.
Free cash.
Free cash.
Okay.
So, but the question, the, the discussion is about not, and leaving the four sixty-two in, four, four sixty-two?
Yeah.
In, in free cash.
Okay.
We have a differing of opinion on, on reducing the, the rationale for reducing the tax rate on that. So.
Okay.
Right?
Exactly, right, that's, yeah, because we have one project that costs three and a half million dollars, or three million dollars.
Which would be a bonded project. It's gotta be bonded. You wouldn't, it has to be. It's a, it's a project that will have to go out to be voted on and bonded. There's no ifs, ands, or buts. There's no, you can't do that. You, we don't have the financial means to, because we can't guarantee that every year, we're gonna have seven hundred thousand dollars in free cash to pay the note.
Right.
Right? So it has to be a bonded project.
But if we, in, in theory, this, this, we're just throwing hypotheticals out there. This Main Street repair is what, three years out? Four years out, probably, three years?
Not, not if Tom Ferry has his way.
Well, I'd like to have my, you know, everyone would like to have their way with things, but, you know, in, in reality.
If he does get that, you're looking at, you're looking at, I don't know, a little over two hundred grand to borrow.
Which we would end up taking out of free cash anyway at the end of the year, right?
No, no, it would have, it would have to be appropriate. It would be raised inappropriately at, at the end of the town, at the end of the district meeting. Which means the tax rate's gonna go up anyway by that two hundred. So you keep it.
I, I get, I get the whole, I get the whole theory of let's, let's lower the tax rate, let's lower the tax rate, but then when we come up against, you know, new water mains and new major projects.
I was reading the report.
It's gonna have to be paid for somehow anyway.
You have to go.
And the tax rate's gonna go up or whatever it's gonna be. So we're lowering the tax rate to raise the tax rate. This is basically what I'm getting at.
But you, you.
I don't know if that's a simple, a simple sign of the way I'm looking at it, but.
You are returning the money back to the rate payer in a, in a single year.
And they're gonna pay for it later anyways.
I was reading the report earlier.
They, they could be, but, but, but they, but wait a minute. They, they.
It's optics, it, it's all optical.
They have the ability to say yes or no if they want the tax rate raised.
That's fine, then. I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem. But at least we'll have some money in it.
Is it something that Karen, Carol, if I give her the numbers?
She can tell you what.
Maybe she could figure out what it would be from two, giving back the two hundred?
Yeah.
And not giving back the two hundred?
Yeah.
And see what the tax rate would be.
Who's that?
The assessor.
The assessor.
The assessor's office can do that one.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because we're not going to sign this name.
Yeah.
That's fine. I'd like you to do that, that'd be.
I just wanna get a bunch of, I just wanna get.
Here's what I'm gonna ask. Here's, here's what I'm gonna ask. Uh, I, I ask that we leave the article on there. We leave it with no number and we allow the, the. No one may show up at the meeting anyway. We know what our district meeting's like.
We have time, and we have time to work out a number, no, right?
But if, if, yeah, so ask Carol if she can work out if it's fifty, if it's a hundred, if it's a hundred and fifty, and if it's two hundred.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm, I'm cool with that.
With the articles that we have and that we'll.
And we do have, we do have super pretty low rates anyway.
Yeah, yeah, very.
Compared to everyone else.
Well, when you put, when, when you put the, when you, right, we do, even when you put, when you put our rate into the tax rate, we, we figured it out. We're lower than nothing.
Yeah.
That's why them not buying water from us is ridiculous.
Yeah.
We told them that. We told them that. But me, I prefer to put more on our rate side than on the tax side.
Well, that's fine, that's fine. I agree with you. Yeah, and I think, I, I think even tier one should stay the same in two, three, four. I know that's gonna hit, oh, you want all right?
Yeah, yeah.
But, but how, we can't keep.
I prefer to have to pay for my usage.
They'll do something, they'll tier it.
I don't mind, I don't like.
But I, I think, I think it's ridiculous when, when I, just because my house is four thousand square feet.
Well, that's what tomorrow, when it'll be finished, but he is.
Yes. But you didn't know when.
And valued at six hundred thousand, I don't use any more water than somebody who's got a two thousand square foot house with four kids in it.
Exactly. I'm, I'm.
Well, how can we get those numbers faster than, I mean, what, if it's a dollar a gallon for us, I mean, if we call Somerset and Swansea and see what other districts is, should we be in comparison to?
Swansea's more taxed than rate and it's problematic. They're more taxed than rate, so people just use water like it's, you know.
What do you mean they're more taxed? So their base tax?
They pay more on the water.
They're more taxed than rate. They're like seventy-five, twenty-five or something. They get most of their money from the tax.
If, if, if.
Which I don't agree.
If this note was paid off here, our tax rate would be about fifty-five to sixty cents.
Wow.
Because we would strictly, ninety percent of what we would do is, would be based off of the rate.
Speaking hypothetically, if we did find water out there and it wasn't close to here, we'd more than likely be building a, a smaller like plant, not.
Alright, so let's decide what we wanna have on special dis, at district meeting, because we're gonna have to set the tax rate sometime in November, so it's gonna have to be before that. So how about no, the week of November? It's October already.
Middle of October.
It's actually October.
I don't come in here.
When are you going away?
July eighth.
So why don't, can we do it the week of November fourth, like do it November seventh?
I would think of that.
How about do an election day?
We don't have an election that day.
Yeah, man.
We can, I, we usually do it on a Thursday though, right? Tenth. I'm going to tenth to seventeenth.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll leave him.
I don't leave the seventeenth, I said the.
When are you going?
I'll see you then.
The seventeenth to the nineteenth.
So, yeah.
The twenty-second, seventeen to the twenty-second.
And when are you going?
The week before.
Before, okay.
No, same as him, the week before, Derek. So why don't we do it on the seventh?
What about me?
What, oh yeah, what do you got in November?
Oh, you, you still working?
Thanksgiving.
I don't know, I got, I got an election in April, right?
November, just because the tax rate's probably gonna be that.
Following week.
Third week.
Yeah, oh, the third week.
I think the.
I can do the week.
Can we do the week of the fourth?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we do the seventh?
November seventh.
Does that work for you, Thursday night?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wrong.
Do you wanna do it at the Old Town Hall again?
Old Town Hall, yeah.
Old Town, November seventh. Is it seven PM usually?
Yeah. Usually seven.
We gotta get it.
No, I was there.
Just make sure you write up a note so we know what the highest thing to do.
It's the hardest thing to do.
That was the tax rate, yeah, that was the tax rate, yeah. It was, it was.
I used to have Rockford all the time, but then.
John DeSanto, I'll do it again.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
Alright, almost, almost.
Almost.
Yeah, alright, so that's under new business. Public hearing notice, when do we wanna, we can't do it the same night, can we?
We did, we've done it before. We did it like a half hour before.
Okay, we'll do the public hearing the same night?